We'll call the meeting to order. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the republic which stands
which stands
a nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Beach.
Here.
Dahl.
Here.
Filippos.
Here.
Harvey here. Kenders excused. McLaren.
Here.
Nogi.
Here.
Navatchek.
Here.
Ulander.
Here.
Okay, I'm just waiting for my screen to pop up.
Does everybody see the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good.
Are there any public comments on agenda items?
There were no public comments submitted as of noon today.
Okay. Superintendent's report?
Under Superintendent's report this evening, we have congratulations to two teachers, both of which received donors choose grants. Michelle Quetora received an essential for a new type of school year for $100 and a document camera. And Marla Fashura at Mendon received comfy in the classroom for $362. So thank those teachers for writing those grants. We want to congratulate Dr. Lisa Muma for receiving a grant for her rocks class that's done with our females at our elementary schools in the amount of $5,000. So she received funding to continue those grants within our elementary schools. Our three elementary schools were recognized by the Pennsylvania Positive Behavior Support Network for their implementation of a positive behavior support plan. It's here one sustaining with fidelity during the 1920 school year. So they will be recognized by that Pennsylvania Positive Behavior Support Network at a virtual ceremony across the state on November 13th. So congratulations to our three elementary schools. The last thing I have on my report is the York School District did receive some additional PCCD School Safety and Security Grant monies and the amount of $50,390. These monies will be used for additional cleaning supplies and items for long distance learning. And that was a continuation of the grant that we had received in the spring. The state was wanting some of that money back and now they've released it. Other than that, two informational items this evening. The PDE has informed us that we were compliant with the IDEA, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act for the previous year. So we are in compliance. And number two, the York School District did complete a homeless audit. They do homeless audit once every three years for all the districts across the state of Pennsylvania. It was a good audit. We received obviously no citations. I wanted to do a special thank you to Mrs. Hildebrand for her hard work and dedication to our homeless programming across the district. So thank you to Mrs. Hildebrand for all her hard work with regard to our homeless population in the York School District. We have two brief presentations this evening, both with Mr. Meyer, the Budget Performance Report and the Construction Fund update.
I have a couple of questions regarding under the congratulations thing. What is a document camera?
A document camera is similar to what you used to see maybe in a classroom, an overhead projector where you can place a document under the camera and then it's projected up onto a screen. But it doesn't just have to be a document. I could place an object on that and it would project it up onto the screen.
What's all consisting of comfy in the classroom for $362? We never really talk about the grants or you know, how the children benefit from it. So I'm just questioning what's all related to that.
Correct. Those would be, I believe, and I'll have to double check this one, but I believe that that was things for in the classroom for alternative seating. But I can double check that.
Okay. And then this other one where they're going to get $50,000. Is there, is there any way we can get a breakdown on how that money is spent? And what is long distance learning? What does that all entail?
So I can tell you the items for long distance learning are, some of that would have been for possibly Chromebooks, but also for our MiFi boxes for families within the community that are having trouble with their internet that need extra Wi-Fi devices. And then the cleaning supplies, I can tell you that with the COVID situation that we can give you a breakdown, but those are cleaning supplies for within the classrooms as far as EM sanitizers, sanitation fobbers, disinfectant sanitation spray, those types of things.
And how are we determining then from the CARES fund? How much money, I thought we were using a lot of that money for disinfectant.
We are actually using both that money and this money.
And who determines how much goes to cleaning supplies and how much goes to long distance learning?
That was written as part of the grants that were written and approved back in the spring. This is just an extension of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions? Okay. Meyer?
Regarding the Budget Performance Report on the expenditure end, this is pretty typical for four months into the year. This is a report based on a cash basis. So I caution that don't think that we're four months into the year. Everything should be a third of the spending. A couple of items of note on this professional purchase services is way underspent, which is common this time of year because of the professional services for special education, particularly with OTPT. Again, we're on a cash basis. We have yet to receive goals for September and October yet. Take note of equipment, other grant funded. Dr. Sartain had just gone through some grants, whether it's CARES or PCCD grant. There was a grant that had to all be spent by October 31st. $188,000 of that is that grant spent on again cleaning supplies, Chromebooks and whatnot. So again, the overall spending here is what I anticipated. I'm also going to caution, keep in mind that what we budgeted versus what you're showing here, there is a labor agreement to still be negotiated that would affect these numbers. On the revenue end, under current collections, overall with earned income, our earned income collection since January 1st, we're down just short of 5%, which is about $68,000. Again, keep in mind that when we passed the budget back in June, we actually did an adjustment to our overall earned income collection by 14%. Our real estate tax collections, when you compare it to October 31st last year versus this year, we're down about 5%. But again, with the whole COVID crisis, we adjusted the budget this year. So to date, we've collected about 78% of our real estate tax collection. And keep in mind that we did pass a resolution not to have a penalty period this year. So I believe some of those payments are going to catch up and be paid before the December 31st turnover to the county. The numbers that you see on here for state revenue under property tax relief, $247,000 due to the district, social security of $133,000 due to the district, and the pension of $712,000. This is money we usually have this time of year. I think the state is a little bit behind because of their state budget. We did not get all of our property tax relief money in October like we've done in past years. They did pay us our basic get in specialty money. But as you can see, there's about a million dollars outstanding from the state that we normally have in our pockets this time of the year. I anticipate that money coming in in December. There's some action that has to happen by state legislators, particularly with the social security subsidy that has to happen before we get that money. And now on the federal, keep in mind why there's no revenue for this time of the year. The federal grants that we get have an October 1st grant year. So we'll start billing for that money here at the end of this quarter. Does anybody have any questions regarding the revenue expenses? In regards to the construction fund, the current balance is $301,975. We are going to be meeting with KLH in the first week of December to review the design for the replacement for the middle school sewage treatment plant. That will be bid out in the spring and work will be done in the summer after the students are released. Our projected price is $190,000, but again, that will be bid out. And just as a reminder to the board, the money that you see out of that $301,000, that was done from the prior bond refunding. And that money has to be spent by February 2022, this $101,000 or $301,000. So, and that is all I have.
Nancy, as a follow up to your question, it was for flexible seating, that one grant.
Mr. Myers, question on the construction fund. I think we're a little short to do that boiler in West Newton, but are we going to be doing that? Because I see that as the oldest. Will that be done this time or will that be done in the future, maybe after the next bond refi?
Well, what I would like to do, and we had this discussion this week. And again, I'm saying this because we use KLH as our engineers and our architects for the sewage treatment plant. This is something that we're going to have to have a mechanical engineer look at and do the drawings for us. So I'm not quite sure who the board wants to use to do this. I'm only bringing it up now because we are currently using KLH to do the work for the sewage treatment plant. But this is something we want to start that discussion on because this is work that is going to need to be done when there is nobody in the building, so to speak. But that is the discussion that we had here last week.
Correct.
How to proceed with getting the numbers.
So if we, Mr. Filippos, would do the board or would do any kind of bond refunding, obviously the top three issues in the district right now are those three boilers. So the goal would be to try to replace those boilers. But again, it goes back to who's going to do the mechanical drawing piece of it. And then we would have to, it would be something, because you have to spend that this chunk of money by February 22 and we need to have it done when kids aren't in school. It's something that we would probably need to look at making some decisions over the course of the next couple of months to do a bid out, maybe February or March, at least to do one of the three until such time that the bond, if we refund the bonds, we have additional monies. Because you'll be close to cover one of them with the additional monies left over. You're probably knocking on and off to do all of them, but it's going to be close to do at least one.
Okay, so are we going to be, Mr. Myers, are we going to be looking to bid an engineering firm to do these potential drawings then? Or are we assuming the board is using KLH?
I am not making any assumption. KLH is specific to the water treatment plants because they have to certify the, because of, was it Department of Environmental Protection? They have to certify the water levels out of there every month and they're certified to do that. So we have to use that for the water treatment plant. In my one year here, I am not seeing where the district has a named architect, but that was something I think the board should visit to do. Because of projects that are on this, on this last year.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Myers.
Thank you.
Under Budget and Finance, I need a motion to authorize items one through three. Approve the Board minutes, approve the Treasury report for October 2020, and authorize Westmoreland County Tax Bureau to mail the 2021 Homestead applications in accordance with the following act listed. I need a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nogi. Second. Second by. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under item four, I need a motion to approve the general funds for payment.
So moved, Nogi.
Motion by Mr. Nogi.
Dahl.
Second by Dahl. Roll call vote.
I have a question.
Okay.
Can you tell me what the, there was the marquee or something that needed fixed at Mendon? Or was it $3,200?
Correct. That was something that was decided. I can't remember when it was decided by the board that the classroom was split between the district and the PTO.
They replaced it?
They did replace it, yes.
Okay.
It should have actually been done probably in the spring because of COVID, but didn't get done.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Any other board questions? Roll call.
Beach.
No.
Dahl.
Yes.
Harvey, yes. McLaren. Nancy.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Nogi.
Yes.
Navatchek.
Yes.
Ulander.
Yes.
Filippos.
Yes. Motion carries seven to one. We will maintain number five. Approve the resolution presented by the Bond Council authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed $7,250,000 in order to refund all proportions of the school district's outstanding general obligation bond series of 2016, provided the refunding procedures or produces combined aggregate total debt savings on or all the debt being refunded on a present value basis after allowing for cost of issuance of at least $300,000. I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Beach, a second.
Navatchek.
Second by Navatchek. Any board questions?
Jim, you recommend that we do this? This is the best way, path forward with these bonds?
I think the market is favorable now to move forward. Just to give an update from the last public board meeting. Again, we proceeded with completing the paperwork for this, the bond proceeds. And we also went back and renegotiated some of the fees with some of the professional services with it. That being the underwriting writer, that being the bond council, that being the solicitor, to a savings back to the district of about $17,500. I will say these numbers today, again, the market is going to change. I did have the underwriter run different numbers today. And the net savings is today would be about $462,000. Again, I say that with caution because the market will change. There's a few steps that have to take place and S and P rating has to take place. The first date that we could sell these bonds is December 2nd. There is ample time in between now and December 2nd to complete the bond rating and have these bonds ready to go for sale on December 2nd. And that number will change based on what the market rates are on December 2nd. As this motion says, we would not enter into any agreement that would not produce at least a net return back to the district of $300,000.
Can you please state for the record if we've got any other pricing or comparisons to compare these numbers with besides the Muscatello firm?
The Muscatello firm presented at the last board meeting, I as a business manager have gone out and I looked at the underwriting prices of some comparable school districts that have an A minus rating. The prices on their range from $7 to $8.50 or $8.75 per 1,000 of bond refunding. Through negotiations with Mr. Muscatello's firm, we negotiated it down to $6.50 per 1,000 of the bond issuance.
But we never.
So I did.
Do you compare prices with somebody else or negotiate cost with another firm?
I did not, no.
And these are, they're underwriters only, correct? They're not financial advisors.
Correct.
I'd like to roll call vote.
Beach.
Yes.
Dahl.
I, um, I'm abstaining.
You can't abstain. You have to.
You have to have a reason.
I just don't know enough about it and I'm afraid to vote.
Well then, you know what, Sandy, can you ask the questions you're not sure of? Because you have to vote either yes or no. You can't abstain.
I'm just, I don't, I'm just not sure about it.
Sandy, I think the appropriate thing unfortunately is if you don't have enough information, then you should vote no. We shouldn't approve anything that you don't feel comfortable with.
Yes.
But we're here to give you the answers.
I'll vote no because I don't know enough about it.
McLaren? I didn't hear. Did anyone else hear her? I didn't hear anything.
I'm sorry. No. I'm having problems with my thing. No.
Okay. Nogi?
Yes.
Navatchek?
No.
Ulander?
Yes.
Filippos?
No.
I can't count one.
I think.
Four, three. Oh, did I do my vote?
You did not.
Okay, I'm sorry. Harvey, yes. Sorry.
So four, four. Motion does not pass. At this point, request for qualifications seeking bond underwriters to get pricing for the district. I need a motion.
You do it now or under new business?
You would need to do that under new business.
Okay, we'll do it under new business.
Okay.
Secretary's report?
Executive sessions were held on the following dates. Monday, October 19th, 2026 PM, personnel litigation. Tuesday, November 10th, 2020, before the meeting for personnel litigation. And there's one item to vote on.
Okay, motion to approve policy 247 hazing as amended at the second reading, section four amendment one. Need a motion.
Navatchek.
Motion by Navatchek, a second.
Ulander.
Any board questions? All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Under professional employees, acknowledge the FMLA request for employee 1982 effective November 28th through January 9th, 2021. Item number two, accept the resignation of Jennifer Little, district school psychologist dated November 2nd, 2020. Her last day of employment will be December 23rd, 2020. Need a motion.
Ulander.
Motion by Ulander, a second.
Navatchek.
Any board questions?
I have a question. Then Dr. Sartain, do you just go ahead and then post that position to be advertised? Or do you have to have a board motion for that?
I can actually just post the position unless the board tells me not to.
Okay, I was just making sure that we didn't have to postpone anything to post that position.
No, I'll post it. I'm going to post that position as well as, if you remember last month, we approved Mrs. Ringblum's retirement. I'm going to post both of them hopefully tomorrow.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you said. Who's retirement?
I said last month we approved Mrs. Ringblum's retirement. I'm going to.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I'm sorry. I couldn't hear what you said. Yep.
Yeah, both of them together.
Any other board questions? All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Under athletic activity, approve the following coaches per round for extended season and then approve the hiring of Scott Smith as the middle school assistant basketball coach pending a season due to COVID-19. I need a motion.
Navatchek.
Motion by Navatchek, second by Nogi. Any board questions?
And just for clarification, the hiring of the middle school assistant basketball coaches, is that somebody that's just appointed by Coach Nessar?
Usually they have our senior coach picks the middle school coaches, yes.
Yes, okay.
Any other board questions? All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Under district operations, motion to approve the revised district calendar for 2021 school year and a motion to approve the district phase school reopening health and safety plan as presented. Need a motion.
Navatchek.
Motion by Navatchek, a second.
Ulander.
Second by Ulander. Any board questions?
Dr. Sartain, when is the graduation then going to be for 2021?
The graduation, I don't know that we announced it on the calendar, but it would be scheduled for, hang on, let me pull it up.
I'm assuming with Chromebooks and homeschooling and all that, I mean, there won't be any snow days that, you know, the calendar.
Hopefully there should not be. So the graduation would tentatively be scheduled for June 4th.
Okay. Thank you.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Under board reports, WIU 7, Mr. Kenders is not present. CWCTC, Mrs. Dahl.
Mr. Capson resigned. He is no longer employed at the VOTAC. That's about all we've got accomplished.
Okay, thank you, Sandy. PSBA rep, Sue?
Um, no, I don't have anything at this time.
Okay. Anything under old business? Under new business, request for qualification seeking bond council underwriters?
So you're doing a request for qualification for both a bond council and an underwriter? Is that what you're saying?
I believe, I thought we just needed a underwriter. And then the underwriters provide a typical bond council. So it would be a request for qualification seeking underwriters to give the board pricing on our bond refi. So I would need a motion on that to get pricing. Motion by Ulander. A second.
Navatchek.
Are there any board questions? Roll call vote.
Beach.
Yes.
Dahl. Yes. Harvey, no. McLaren?
Yes.
What was?
Can we have a timeout for a minute? Amy Ulander did not motion that.
Yeah, Nancy, I got you in the minutes.
Okay.
It was Nancy. Yeah, I got you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Nancy. I couldn't hear. I'm sorry.
There's somebody has a scanner or something in the background. I don't know if somebody's talking or what, but it's interfering with whatever I can hear, but.
Yeah, there's a background noise I was getting as well, so I apologize. I thought Amy had made the motion. I apologize.
That's okay.
Nogi?
I was yes.
Navatchek?
Yes.
Ulander?
Yes.
Filippos?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Seven to one. Any solicitors' report?
No, our report was given in executive session. Thank you.
Citizens' comments?
There are none.
Okay. Motion to adjourn is eight, 10. I need a motion.
Can I just ask my question? Can I just ask one question?
Yeah.
And so, Dr. Sartain, can you just recap then how you reevaluate the COVID status and how you determine when we go back and when we might need to stay home?
So I can tell you.
Are you evaluating that?
So what, so what I can tell you based on the situation is PDE and the Department of Health recommend the districts do a full virtual program when you have two substantial beats in a row. This past month, we returned to moderate, so therefore we returned to our blended model of instructions starting today. So if we would come to a situation where we would have two substançals in a row with PDE and the Department of Health, then it is recommended that we go to full virtual instruction. So at that point in time, I would notify the board of that. And then if that is the direction and we're going to follow that recommendation, then we would go to full virtual instruction. I can tell you though, as, you know, just based on opening up today, I've had a number of kids quarantined, a number of students that had.
Somebody please needs to turn their scanner off. You cannot hear what Dr. Sartain is saying.
I muted a couple of people. But at any given point in time, if we would have positive cases and two or more positive cases in one building at the same time, there would be a possibility that building would shut down. That building would shut down based on the recommendation of the Department of Health, which we do contact when we have positive cases to make sure of the timeframe, the quarantine, as well as any contact tracing we would have to do.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure.
Time is eight, 13. I need a motion.
Ulander.
Motion by Ulander. I got it right this time. A second.
McLaren.
Second by McLaren. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good night, everyone.
Good night.